Good evening, welcome to the regular planning commission meeting. December 5th, 2019. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission members present this evening, we have Ms. Collier, Mr. Robertson, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Brown, Mr. Gellum, Mr. Banderski, and Mr. Harsha, and of course, our planning director, Mr. George Floyd. First item on our agenda will be approval of this evening's agenda, any changes?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
By Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Johnson, both in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, motion passed at seven zero. We have two sets of meeting minutes from prior meetings, the meeting of September 5th, 2019, for a meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the final draft of the minutes for the September 5th, 2019 meeting and found everything to be in order, and therefore I make a motion that we approve them as stated.
Motion to approve by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Harsha, both in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, motion passed at seven zero.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the final draft of the meeting minutes for November 7th, 2019, and found them to be in order, and therefore I make a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Or? Motion to approve the regular planning commission by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Brown, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, motion passed at seven zero. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment, if anyone's here that would like to address the planning commission, now would be the time.
Hello, we've been used tonight. LaLaine Kilborn, mailing address is 3103 West Thompson Road, number 182 in Fenton, but I am a Grand Blank Township resident, long time. Okay, I'm mainly here about the master plan. I think last month was a good start of starting to review things, however, I questioned that what you received was a draft that had already been revised in some form, so I think you need a, an accounting of what was previously added or deleted from that. The meeting in a box, great idea, but there's no reason for you to take that out into the community, haul it to group after group after group. That's what you need for the town hall meeting. What you need to do is if you go to these groups, you're only getting opinions from those type of people in your like-minded groups, homeowners associations or other groups. You know, there's nothing going, you know, going bad to go to them, but in your report it said, the highest number of residents were single residential residents in Grand Blank Township. So by going to homeowners associations, you're not catching everyone. I'm not in a homeowners association. I have five neighbors who either don't have a computer for the survey, really wouldn't know how to use a computer to, they know how to use it, but maybe not for the survey, or maybe they just wouldn't do it, but they might come to a town hall. And I think what you need to do is set a couple dates for town hall meetings, different days and times, so different people can come to them. Then you need to go out to all those associations and groups and tell them what the master plan is, how it's going to affect their life, and why they need to come to the meetings. And then you publicize it on the website, on TV, in the newspaper, you get interest, and you have that meeting in a box, but you have it at a town hall, so you don't have to haul it out to everybody. Lost my train of thought. It's, it's good, what you also need to do, and what I've done in the past in doing master plans, give people incentive to show up. Maybe we're going to give you tickets to the Ally Golf Challenge next year, or a certificate to a restaurant, or a drawing for an iPad. Get people to, and give them some food and drink, order, get them to show up to these town halls. Go out, tell everyone, publicize it, have the dates, and have the town halls. You know, that's what you guys need to do. That meeting in a box is great, but it needs to go out to everyone, not just groups. Do you have a question?
I appreciate your passion, and we certainly want a representative sample of the, you know, I think I understand that, you know, I would, I think we should, we'd be giving credit, of course, for the fact that if they, if they don't come to us, we go to them, and I think there's a sincere effort through this, through this meeting in a box, and that survey in a box, that to try and get attention, to get folks to pay attention, but I guess I, my experience in 30 years in public life is that public attention or interest rises and falls with an issue.
Right.
People pay attention when something smacks them to get their attention, or something impacts their life to make, to prompt their interest, but for the most part, you know, we have to work hard to try and get public attention.
That's what we say.
And that's what we're trying to do. That's, at least, that's what I perceive, I'm a new member of the board, the commission here, but I, I perceive a sincere interest or effort on the part of, of the commission and staff thus far to try and, to try and get a good representative sample of the community.
Okay, but.
We can continue, we can continue to strive, but I just want to give credit where, you know, where credit is due, I think, in, in our efforts thus far, since I've been on the
Right, I think the ideas are good, but I'm saying if you're only going to go to certain groups, or homeowners, or maybe the J.C.'s, or whatever group, you know, you're only going to get those, you're not getting everyone in the township, you're not getting some of those people that are being missed.
Well, I agree, we need to represent a sample.
Okay. Anyway, I'll just make.
Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair.
Can I make a final point?
Yes.
Grand Blank was where everybody wanted to come and live, and I'm not against development, but I like to have planned, concise development, because if you overdevelop it, I've seen other communities where then the people are leaving, because it's too overdeveloped and they don't want to live here. The other thing with the maps that were, that you guys reviewed, you've reviewed last week, or last month, they're not actually accurate with the woodlands and the wetlands, so if you're going to use that for future decisions on developments or proposals that come before you, I'd rather have them a little more accurate, so, but, thank you.
Thank you for your input.
And I'll help you guys with town hall meetings and stamps and things, or copies, or whatever that's needed.
Anything else? The commission will close the public council portion, we'll go back up to the planning commission. We had a little bit of correspondence, we had a couple of planning and zoning news, we also had a letter from.
From who now?
Mr. George Floyd.
The cover memo?
Yeah.
December 2nd, yeah, I just kind of give you a quick note of what we're up to tonight.
Any other correspondence?
I do.
All business, master plan.
Yeah, we're going to talk a little bit about that, we just completed, I think it was our ninth steering committee meeting, things are going pretty well, that group, I think tonight was an exceptional night, matter of fact, we were talking about housing in neighborhoods, I did give you, we'll talk about this a little deeper, the actual, the specifics to some of the activities that we're having with the, with the steering committee, but I just want to go over a few what I would consider to be very important points here that we're covering, and one of them is the survey success that we've had. We're over 700 survey response so far, which is a very big number. We needed, I think, 400 in order to call, to, to be quote unquote statistically valid, if you will, from a surveying perspective, but we're keeping this open till the end of the year. And this is open to everybody, this has been in the newspaper a handful of times, this really isn't geared towards any specific groups, but we are going out into the field, if you will, and we are asking people, when they have their homeowners association meetings, to hand out flyers and copies of the survey, because those are groups of people that are coming. And the thing that we've found historically, when we've done our master plan, is that when we have our meetings here, and I think everybody agreed, and one of the reasons we pushed this out was, what we get when we have our meetings here, when we have our open houses here, is the same people showing up. That's the one thing that we know has historically happened. So what we're doing is, we're going to have several of those, we need to have them, we've got a lot of information to convey to people, but we also wanted to push the envelope a little bit, and get out there and do these things called a meeting in a box, or putting these surveys together. These were, you know, big decisions that we made, and we've been pretty successful so far, we're feeling very good about it. Matter of fact, I have a board set up in the room, I'm sorry, I intended to bring it in here, but it's not too much different than what you see on the back table there, you know, we've got copies of the survey, we've got a handout for the flyer, and we've also got the business cards that people can take. So you use your phone, you take a picture, or use the QR reader, and you go right to the survey. So we've stepped up our game with regards to the survey effort, and the questions, and getting feedback from the community, so you should rest assured that we're doing a very good job of, of getting information, and that's not nearly complete yet.
I think I mentioned this last meeting, but it seems like we're getting more feedback for this master plan than we have on any other, is my impression.
Yeah, we're getting, I think we're getting a lot more. I mean, if you look at the numbers from before, we'd maybe hit a couple hundred people who've shown up and given us comments, you know, we're, we're really reaching out this time, and we'll have those same open houses, and I expect they'll be well attended, people are interested in what goes on here, and we'll advertise it properly, and we'll get people to, to show up. I, I don't have any concerns that we're not going to be tremendously successful in getting public input on this master plan. Unfortunately, we don't have any major, major land use issues that are driving, you know, some public outcry. What we have is a good, well-run community that's been doing a pretty good job for a number of years, and wants to continue to do a great job, and, and they've asked us to step up our game and make sure we get good comments, and a lot of comments from people, so that's what we're doing. Survey's going pretty well, and so, any questions on anything there?
Sure, with the commission, what I talked, Mark, about earlier, last meeting, we talked about a letter draft that we could send out to the people we know, email or, or letter, and sent out 25 of those. I had 15 more to go, and one response, I just brought this one because it was, I felt so good, it says, "Thanks for giving me the opportunity to participate in the survey. Grand Blank Township, city and schools have been good to me and my family." And there's somebody that would not have been picked up any other way.
Potentially.
And so, you know, and the other thing that I did, did not know, but Mark clarified for me when he said, "It's open to anyone," if you're in the city, you know, you're still, because I had a couple of people say, "I'm sorry, I live in the city," so now my response back to them is going to be, "That's fine, please fill out the survey." But I expect that probably 90% of that 40 will respond, because they're people I know, and they know me. So that's when I said that if we send it to people we know, it'll, you know, it'll work. And then if they've already responded, now, this is by email, if they've already done the survey, and they do, click again just to, to get to the website, the survey monkey will tell them, "You've already responded," so it won't be a waste of their time.
It registers the email address.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, anyway, it's, that part has been good and encouraging to myself.
Nice to hear.
And it was, it was a good idea, Vince, thanks. You know, hopefully some others have done the same thing, because you all got the same letter, so just take the time, it's, it's worth doing, you know. You know, tonight, folks, we're going to, I don't want to spend a lot of time going into this next section of geographic areas of interest, but I do want to spend some time talking about it, I'd like to prime you guys, because what I, at the end of the day, I'm going to follow Vince's, almost every meeting, he suggests that we give the planning commission homework, so tonight, I'm going to give you some homework. Thank you, Vince. And so you can do it over your holiday break, don't worry, but, but what we've got here, folks, and everybody, this shouldn't be very hard for anybody, but there, there could be somewhat of a challenge. You know, this here is, is an aerial of our township, and, you know, everybody kind of knows a little bit of something about everything here, but we have some areas in town that I would imagine folks have different opinions about. Me, for example, I, I really have some interest in trying to figure out, how are we going to do something up there at Maple and Saginaw when you come into the township? You know, it's a real important part of the township for me, and there's not a lot up there that you can, to, to do anything with, there's not a lot of resource, but boy, I'll tell you, I just can't help that. I look at that area, and I think, you know, this township ought to identify that as an area we want to do something with, and not just let whatever happen. Now, that's just my opinion, and if other folks are of a like mind, then, you know, we can identify those things, so that as we're writing this master plan, one of the ideas is to identify some geographic areas that we, as a township and the community, would like to see the township take some interest in. Tech Village, perfect example, I mean, clearly, our master plan will and needs to address Tech Village. It's a geographic area, so we will spend time on that, and if that's an area that you're interested in having us pay attention to, use that one, write it down, I'm just going to ask you to send me four. But, you know, you've got those kind of areas, you've got Tech Village, it's, it's a clearly defined area, and that's part of the problem with some of the other ones, like the north end of town that I'm talking about at Maple. What are the parameters there? Where do you, where do you draw your lines? Do you just kind of draw a circle and sort of get the area, or do you go parcel by parcel? I'm not that deep on it yet, but what, what I would ask you folks to do is to take the time to find areas throughout the community. If it's just in your neighborhood, that's fine, if there's places you want to go drive and take a look, go, "Hey, you know what, I think I'll just go out and look around, maybe I'll find something I haven't seen before," it, your choice, but what I would like is for you to take a look at these areas, you know, identify those areas that, that, you know, and we can look at it in a few different ways. For example, I just look at the area in the north end of town, there, and I'll just continue to talk about that Maple-Saginaw area primarily, but it goes a little further down. You know, there's some deep lots there on the west side of Saginaw, you know, they go back quite a ways, now I realize there's some wetlands, and there's some issues back there, but there, some of these properties do extend quite a ways back, and so there's potential to at least take a good look at those areas, and that's really all that I'm talking about, is, is looking at them, determining whether or not they're, they're truly developable, and under what circumstances, and, and then in what way. You know, if you've got an area at the north end of town, that's one of your primary entry points, well, you know, you, you may want to consider that as one of the factors you include in your determination of what kind of uses you want to see there. You know, hey, wait, this is an entry, you know, it's not the middle of town, it's not, you know, off on the side, you know, it's probably not a residential area, right? So, so, you know, what do we do, and how do we address that? I notice you.
Yeah, I just, you know, Mr. Chairman, you know, I was thinking about that end of the township, the north, northern, northern portion, there at Maple and Saginaw for years, it seems like, in this case, someone starts a restaurant in a previously closed restaurant, and there's been a cycle of probably five or six or seven different restaurants of different kinds, and they've all failed.
Yeah.
And I'm going, I don't really understand what caused them to fail.
Right.
Different kinds of cuisines, and whatever you want to, whatever you want to call it, and I keep thinking, what are they doing wrong, if anything? Maybe, maybe that area isn't really ripe for having success as a restaurant, I don't know. And I look on the other side there, and some areas flourishing quite nicely, and so I'm kind of at a loss to think what, what could be different, and what could be done differently right there to make a business of one sort or another successful.
And, and maybe that's one thing that this planning commission can decide that they would like to learn more about, is, you know, what, what are the market conditions that are driving these land uses and these businesses to open and close? We can find some folks to come in and have a chat with us on things like that, so, you know, if, if you are interested in, in learning about that, maybe trying to understand it, there's real estate folks and other people around that we have contacts with, we could talk to them about it, and ask them to maybe attend a meeting, or write us a, a note or something, help us understand it.
Yes, it has a lot to do with perception.
I would imagine.
Two, three years ago, we did the Saginaw Street Corridor Study.
It was a lot longer than that.
Okay, five years ago.
It's been a while.
Is there, is there anything out of that, that was done then, that we might look at and, you know, take out of that as, maybe give us a jumpstart?
Yeah, I, I think, I think there probably is, and that is part of our document library, if you will, for the master plan, but the thing that I would point out is that this body, over the years, plural, you've taken the time to modify your zoning ordinance in a way that's incorporated a lot of those provisions into it, you know, some of your landscape provisions and other things that you dealt with for the streetscapes and different things have been incorporated into your zoning ordinance for standards, so you, you've done a lot of the work that was referenced in there, but it is worth taking a look and see what were the issues that they identified, what are the things that were brought out. If, if that area, and that's the key, is that if that area becomes one that, that this, either this body or that we determine, we want to look at. The one thing that we're looking at with this plan is, is, is finding a way to, to work towards becoming a redevelopment-ready community, and one of the things we'll need to have is several areas that we've identified in our master plan that we would like to concentrate on, that's one of the things that they're going to be considering, us, that the state would look at. So we would want to identify, you know, a couple of areas, I'd say a handful, and then, and then pick out, you know, the three that would be most important to us, and, and, and just identify how and whether or not those items are going to move through on the master plan, and what we would do is just identify those as areas of interest, identify the things that we think would, would like to see or have there, and then identify that as a, as one of the goals and objectives of the master plan would be to take the necessary measures to, to do the rezoning, to do the underlying master plan, to encourage certain kinds of uses, to do, or to change the zoning ordinance to, to create incentives for new development to occur in and around those areas. So the master plan won't tell us what's wrong and how to fix everything, it's going to identify that as an area of interest, and one that we believe needs to be looked at and analyzed for future development purposes. So it's really kind of, the master plan is kind of our springboard into taking those next steps, because those areas that we identified would be identified on the, in our goals and objectives, in our implementation plan, and then as we move forward, we would be taking those kind of actions, not unlike what you did with the Saginaw Street Corridor Study and other things, we'd probably engage in a handful of other studies associated with some of these things.
Well, one thought along that line is, we may want to consider moving out from, you know, for example, Hill Road North as compared to starting at Saginaw and Maple, and go south, because if we do something on, on that, just say that intersection, you come in and, "Hey, this is Grand Blank," and then you come to these areas that aren't so likable, or, you know, it may, it may be a negative impact, so, just something to think about it, grow out rather than try to come in.
That's a very good point, I, I wouldn't have thought of it that way, and I really appreciate that.
Okay, so the assignment is for?
Well, the assignment is going to be identify four areas of the township, and size really doesn't matter, but please identify four areas of the township, not unlike, you know, what I've done here, and you can, if you would like, you can have a map, if you want to just identify them in writing, you can, that's fine, we can create the map for you. If you want me to send you a map and you want to circle it, I, I could, or if you want to come in and pick one up, you can have one. But what I would like is for you to just identify three or four areas of the township that you see as potential development sites, areas that either are underutilized, or completely vacant, maybe it's just a vacant area, or they've deteriorated to a point where they need some real help, because I think that's one thing that this township hasn't quite gotten to yet, over time, is recognizing that we have some older houses, we have some older infrastructure, we have some true needs from an economic standpoint, there's folks in town that really need help, and we don't have a very robust program in our community for addressing that, yet, because the problem hasn't really been a big problem in our community. And my point here in raising that is, let's make sure it doesn't become one, let's do the things, you know, proactively to get out ahead of these things, let's try to find ways of obtaining additional CDBG money to help improve some of these areas that need help, or whatever else might be available. My point is, I think we need to turn the page a little bit here and start addressing some of these things, maybe in ways that we haven't. Now, that's me as the township's relatively new planner, coming in telling you these things, it doesn't mean that's a community interest, that's just me letting you know, but I'm trying to kind of prime the pump and give you, you know, a chance to maybe think a little deeper about these areas that you choose, and recognize that, you know, there's some unmet needs in, in this community, and, you know, wow, this is our chance to, I try to identify them, and then do the things necessary to, to get them into our community.
Chairman, if I may, you know, I think, when I think again back to the Maple and Saginaw area, I don't think we do a good enough job, especially right there, of making sure people understand they've just left Burton and they're now into the Grand Blank Township, I know we have signage out there, I'm certainly aware of that, but if you take a look at when, when we were developing the Fenton and Hill Road area, we required those businesses to put ice brick walls there where we could say, "Welcome to Grand Blank," I think we need to spruce up the northern boundary in some fashion right now. Right now, okay.
Yeah, don't, don't count on me, plus we have the recording on, but no, I am, that's, that's a very good point. My, my point is this, from that, and you may not be thinking this way, maybe you're thinking, "We, as the township ought to take that on," but me, my approach to something like that would be to work cooperatively with, with potential new development that coming into the area, and see if they would participate.
Was done at Fenton.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what in our zoning ordinances require people, once they leave a facility and it's their standing, the maintenance that they're required to do? My example is, I just went down Door Highway the other day, drove by La Cloman Golf Course, and I used, you know, my kids used to play there all the time, and now, now it's grass grown, weeds and everything, and then right adjacent to that is the restaurant that's closed, and I don't, I presume that'll start showing the same way. I mean, even if they're not there, you know, how can we require whoever the landowner is to take care of that, because that's the first, when you see that, I mean, that all of a sudden sends a very negative signal, you know, and so when you talk about places that are closed up or deteriorating, that's a very negative sign, so if we have something that either they have to do, or the township can then go in and do it, and charge back and put it on their tax bill, something that we should think about.
Our notice allows us to do either of those, we can do them both right now, today. The issue frankly, for us, honestly, is the approach that we take from a code enforcement standpoint on pretty much everything except signs, snipe signs and other things that get put on polls, we are very aggressive and proactive towards those, but we're not proactive towards much else in the way of, of code enforcement, but we're, we're complaint-based, so it's complaint-driven, we, we receive complaints and we go out and we respond to them. That's just the way it is.
So we should all, as another future assignment, all pick a place and complain about it?
It's your house, Vince.
Yeah, yeah, sure, we'll take care of that for you, but that's what you do, I mean, that's how we, that's just the facts of how we do things.
Talk about sprucing things up.
Right, no, we need to make sure we have the appropriate. We need to make sure we have the appropriate language in our ordinance to enforce that. And we do. The issue is, how aggressive do we want to be? And that becomes a policy decision. You know, that's not ours. That becomes a policy decision. We constantly ask, don't get me wrong. I am always making sure that we are doing all that we can do for the community that we're being asked from the policymakers to make sure that we're doing the kind of enforcement that they want. And we've had some very good dialogue. And we've recently had some, some dialogue about some long-term enforcement issues. And so, we are moving that ball. And we are taking some steps to make some improvements on those kinds of things that you mentioned. We do have all the mechanisms we need.
When, when we observe that a particular parcel or building is vacant, that, do, do we as a matter of routine reach out to the ownership? They would have an, I would think if they're marketing the property, they have an interest in upkeep and that type of thing. I mean, is there a, is there a mechanism whereby we, we check back with them on a periodic basis? Or anything along those lines? Is that, okay. Just curious, what your, what the experience has been?
Yeah, we just don't have it. You know, there's a lot of programs out there along those lines. They become pretty labor-intensive potentially. So, those are the kinds of things that are part of our balance. It's, it could be a very good idea. It's, it's really a matter of how and where does it fit and what's the extent of, of the issues. A lot of times what happens is we know folks who are in buildings. I mean, this is a pretty small community still, you know? So, a lot of people know people. So, when somebody's heading out or whatever, we kind of know. And then a lot of the folks who own properties here know somebody. So, we really don't have a lot of those big enforcement kinds of issues, but we have them. And, and, and we have good folks who go out and get them. We have a court that's very supportive. I mean, we, we really aren't up against a lot of problems with code enforcement, you guys. So, you know, if there's more that you see or you think that we can do, we should talk about that. And then, you know, we'll move those ideas on, you know? I, I, I appreciate it. So, out of this exercise, if there's anything you could bring. But, but what I'm asking for, I'll repeat it again, because I'm not sure I'm being clear, is I really would just like you to get four areas, identify, you know, what you think the issues might be there and what you think it might take to, to correct. And I know that not everybody here is an expert on rezoning or whatever. But you can think about things like upzoning, increasing the density, you know, eliminate certain uses, don't allow those. Maybe you can find some areas out there where we've let uses come in and you see them now and you go, "Oh, boy, that just probably never should have happened," or whatever. I, I don't know, I haven't seen this whole community yet. But I find something new every time I go out, you know? And I go out, you know, intentionally to find those kinds of things. So, I need your help in that regard. And I think this would be a good, a good bit of information that the planning commission can bring back. We'll, we'll work on that. And then what I'd like for us to do is to convey that information over, you know, to the steering committee and see what their thoughts are. And then when the, when it, when it comes back around and the planning commission is actually starting to do the real work on the master plan after the steering committee work is done, then, you know, the work that you've done on that, we'll revisit and, and try to, try to make that work for us.
And the assignment is due when?
Well, I would, I think it'd be good to have maybe, you know, before our next meeting. And that comes up soon for us to talk about. We, we need to consider whether or not we're going to have a meeting on January 2nd, which I think probably we won't. But we would have to look at when we might have our, our next meeting.
January 15th, homework assignment?
Could be. But, did you say January 15th?
Yes.
Saying have it complete by then?
Yes.
Oh, complete by then, yeah, if it's...
Give it to you by then?
Yeah.
Have some time to look at it?
Thank you, Vince.
Respond?
Yeah, and put the date on the bottom, guys. No, I'm just kidding. That's a personal thing between Vince and I.
You'd be congratulated.
I couldn't help it.
Be congratulated.
No, thank you, Vince, for tightening that up a little bit. Yeah, let's do it if you guys, if you're good on that, the 15th. I'll send a note out tomorrow. And I'll describe it a little bit. But thanks, because, you know, I just need some help. Would you like me to send a map? I mean, what, do you guys want a map? What do you want? Is there anything I can do to help you kind of with the assignment? What do you think? I mean, you can always find line.
I was just gonna say, I was thinking about starting with Google Maps myself. I'm just kind of looking at it, and like, hey, I might take a drive over there. I haven't been in that area for a while.
Okay, yeah. That's, that's kind of what I do. And when you ask for the township, what it does is it does this and it, you know, it, at least, you know, it gives you the parameter. So, when you're moving around, you know where you're at. So, yeah, thanks. I, I really would appreciate that. It's a big piece of the work that we're doing. So, let's move on to the next item. Another one is, is really another discussion item as well. And that is the idea of coordinating some meetings with the other commissions and boards. Now, I know we've started, at least since I've been here, you know, trying to get together with the township board annually. And I think that's very important. I, I also think it's hugely important, and Ed, I hope you'll agree with this, that we find some time annually. We need to check in annually with the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think these two groups need to come together, whether it's... I don't know which way the joint meeting needs to go, but it needs to be a joint meeting. And there's just, there's good information to share. What happens at the planning commission level and the, and the ordinances that we have on the books are oftentimes, not, not too often, don't get me wrong, but when they're challenged, they're challenged through the ZBA. And the ZBA is a quasi-judicial body that's got Mr. Ed Brown on it and I'm on that, Mr. Laddie as well. So, there's a lot of coordination, if you will. And my point is, the, the, the members ought to get a good understanding of what each other does. And they're, you know, maybe a little bit about the roles and responsibilities. Don't want to go too far with that. But talk about the real relationship there, you know? And how, when we make decisions at the planning commission level, I got a great example for you guys, just going to blow your mind. And when we make our decisions here at the planning commission level and we write ordinances, those potentially get challenged and they end up in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Well, fortunately, we don't have a lot of way out of line kinds of things. But you know one thing that the Zoning Board of Appeals, Ed, hopefully you'll remember this, that they brought up at the last meeting? And I don't remember who it was that, that raised the point. But it was just such a good point about doing the review of this. Oh, it was Debbie Onea. She made a comment about the floor plan. We had two setback issues for decks at the last Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. One of them in particular was, was, was... Both of them had their houses built pretty close to the rear setback. You know, they had a little bit of room to build a deck, at least on one side, but the, the property was at a bit of an angle. So, the other side, they couldn't. Well, the thing that, that we missed from a planning standpoint, and, and I got to admit, it was kind of embarrassing. I mean, this was probably 10 years ago when the project was approved. But what's, what, what, what it made me realize, and I've done this before, I'm sure, myself, is that whoever looked at the plans when we approved those site plans, we never looked at that second-story floor plan to see what they were doing there. Because if we would have, we would have seen that they put a sliding glass door there right on the property line. And, and, and so, somehow or another, they've got to build a structure big enough to meet code for, to egress, to exit from the building to stand on. They have to have what's called a landing. And you would never be able to build anything out there. So, it was, it was sort of inherent in, in the approval that if somebody was ever going to utilize the house the way it was designed, they would have to get a variance. And that just don't seem right, you know? That we should be looking at that or identifying it when we see it in the plans and saying, "No sliding glass window up here," you know? Or, or, you know, a door. Go ahead, please.
At what level did this occur? Any commission?
What do you mean? At what level? The review?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we review all the plans, at the site plan review and the planning commission when we do large tract of land.
You talking about when a developer was doing this?
Yeah, because a lot of times it seems like they'll come in and not be super specific about what they're doing. They will show a building envelope on, on the potential building envelope, you know, based on the setbacks and that kind of thing.
But oftentimes, Dan, we require them to give us floor plans and building elevations of all the units they're going to build. And that's what I'm getting at with this particular place. I mean, it was designed that way. I mean, the subdivision, when it was, when it was built and approved, was approved with certain architectural features on the buildings. They are, you know, they showed the elevations and we had the floor plans. I mean, we knew what was going to happen with an option. You know, an option in this room, an option in that room, a kitchen or a den or whatever, you know?
But I guess thinking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't think that the planning commission thought about, for example, when you're going to have a door wall leading to nowhere.
Right, sure, that's my point.
And I don't think we looked at it that closely by any means.
It's just my point is, it's one of those things we could catch, you know? And, and we would, but, but we wouldn't necessarily know it was a problem unless they needed a variance, you see? And so, then the ZBA feels compelled to grant the variance because, well, that was stupid, you know, for them to approve it like that, you know? So, you know, we just, it's just a little glitch in our process and our coordination that we might be able to take a look at, that's all. You know, I mean, I know that from now on, I'll be looking for that on all the plans that I review. I, I didn't pay a lot of attention to that, honestly, just didn't. It just wasn't a, a thing that, that registered for me. And I've been reviewing plans forever, you guys. I, it was just, just one of those things that I think honestly, it's not a, it's just not one of those things that's in front of you a lot.
I just remember seeing that. We would see a typical floor plan, that kind of thing. But we wouldn't look to see, oh geez, you've got this one right up to the edge of that. I don't forget that detail.
Yeah, and, and if it's not, I'll just put it this way, too. It could be emphasized, I'll put it this way, by the planning commission. Hey, we want to make sure that we're looking at those things. And when a plan comes in, we'll, we'll talk about it. We'll ask the developer now, probably, right? We'll probably actually raise the question. And so, and, and I will be looking for that as well. So, you know, it just becomes one of those things that we're more, you know, focused on.
Overlook.
Yep. Well, sir, you want to, I'm done with that one.
You're done, can I ask you one?
Well, yeah, that part, I think. Well, I, I would like to start working on one. The Zoning Board of Appeals has asked us to consider looking at the building heights for accessory buildings. And that's come up because what we're learning is, and I think we've talked about this a little bit, that through the industry, you know, RV industry, they're just building those things taller with units on top. And, you know, this 14-foot height limit that we have is, it seems that every unit out there being made is exceeding that. At least, you know, some of these newer, bigger units, of course. And we're just going to take a look at whether or not we really ought to be considering that. And if we're going to, if we're going to allow that height to go up, we're going to also look at those, those, you know, side issues like, well, under what conditions? How far away from the neighbors? You know, we, we don't want to necessarily have the current setback standards apply to a building that's now going to be three or four or five foot taller. We may want it to be set back a little further. So, those would be things we'd want to look at.
Like the main building out of Residence, we measure to the midpoint of the wall, I think. Does that apply on the accessory?
It does. It's how we, it, it depends on the roof design. It's how and where we measure to. You know, you've got a gable, you measure to that first edge. And then you've got a standard roof, you measure to the middle of the pitch. And there's a couple of other different measurement techniques.
Mr. Chairman, just so I understand, understand you, when you refer to secondary buildings, you're referring to like other structures on residential property?
I'm saying accessory buildings.
Accessory buildings.
And it is. It's like a detached garage, a shed, a pole barn. Those would all be accessory buildings.
I see, okay. I, just so I under, I presume that that was the case, but I wanted clarification on the exact definition. Thank you.
Yes, going down that road, I've noticed in subdivisions all over this township, these units, these RV units you're talking about are starting to appear alongside of garages. People are pouring, pouring driveways. 12, 14 feet wide, 30 feet deep behind their houses so they can put their RVs, their trailers. I don't understand why that's going on in the subdivision.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to take a look at that, I'm not sure.
My understanding was you could park something, a unit, a boat, a camper, whatever, 14 days and it had to be gone.
You have to move it, yeah.
Right.
And if I'm wrong, somebody correct it.
Nope.
I know, I know my son. Those are moves his every couple of weeks.
That may, yeah. But the thing that is, when I look at it in a subdivision, the neighbor's got to be looking at this barn next to his house. When you drive through there, some of them are out, you know, extend out in front of the buildings, some of them don't. I, that's something I don't...
So, it sounds like you have some interest in taking a look at that piece of the wood.
I, I'd like to see a couple of those places you're talking about. Because there are criteria for locating these facilities, anything. You know, you've got site coverage, you've got percentage lot coverage issues to contend with, you've got setbacks. So, I'd be real curious to take a look at these quote-unquote subdivisions that might have a pole barn. Because, you know...
Not pole barn, just, these are units sitting on outside. They're not in, in a building. They're just sitting outside alongside the house.
Oh, you mean, this is their motor home sitting out?
Their motor homes or travel trailers and boats.
Okay.
Well, boat, we have boats.
Yeah.
But more so RV units.
Okay, so you're not talking about them being in a, in a storage unit?
No, they're not in a, in a closure.
Okay.
They're just out in the open.
Okay.
And that's why I thought that that 14 days was how long, you know, you have a unit. You can put it on in the driveway 14 days and at some point it has to go away.
You have to move it every 14 days.
That's, that's, that's pretty much what it is. If it's in an enclosed building, it's fine.
Or if it's behind the house.
If, I mean, Mr. Chairman?
If it's stored properly, there are criteria for that. And I, I don't want to get too far into that.
This has all started because the Zoning Board of Appeals has had a numerous, not numerous, several cases come before the Zoning Board of Appeals this year with just that exact example that we're talking about here. Where in every one that we've done so far, it really wouldn't affect any neighbors because they're in kind of low developed areas.
Yeah.
Large parcels, as an example. And we're seeing more and more of these requests to be able to build an outbuilding to house their RV. It's like a motorhome. Well, it is a motorhome.
Yeah. And they're, you know, we've got to consider whether or not we want to, you know, adjust our standards or simply, you know, require folks to continue to come through and, and get a variance if they want to. So, we've got to do an analysis of that. And the Zoning Board of Appeals has asked us to take a look at it. And I told them I'd be happy as long as Commissioner Coulter would be willing to help. And so, I guess that's kind of where that goes.
Okay, I'm a volunteer.
Thank you. Well, there you go. We got past that one. Thank you.
I'll work on the, you know, on the language. We'll have to get, obviously, you know, we've got commissioners on the actual substance of, you know, what we want to do. But I'd be happy to kind of work on...
Yeah, we'll start...
Something together.
Digging it up and we'll bring it back to you guys and see what you think. And then we'll probably go back and fix it.
Is there any value in considering the building of that parcel as to the height of the accessory building? If you're in a very dense, small lots that are 60-foot wide, you may not want a much taller accessory structure there. But if you've got a 10-acre parcel, for those who cares?
And we do that now with the square footage and/or even being able to have an accessory unit. There are some criteria for a certain number of acreage in order to have one or even two. Sometimes you can have two accessory buildings, but then you get into the lot coverage issue. But the idea of, of even allowing them or having them, you know, based on the size of the parcel, that'd be worth looking at.
Because I think some of the areas of the township, we've got the smaller-sized lots...
Oh, sure.
On the north end that probably would, it's probably keep the accessory going.
Right. Well, we'd have to look at, we, we're going to have to look at that and do some analysis of some of the areas, you know, and say, okay, you know, this is an area that's got primarily, you know, 60 by 120 square, 120-foot lots. You know, they're probably not going to be able to get a, a, an accessory structure of that nature, the size limitation to be there. So, we'll have to look at what our current standards are, kind of flush that out. And then look at, you know, how we can supplement that in a way that might facilitate this, this interest. And then look at, well, what does that do? And what does that mean now that we're, that we're considering it? So, so we will, we'll take a good look at that. Thank you. Oh, how about this next item? You ready? Yeah. Annual report. And I've given you all a copy. What I'd like to do is take a few minutes, what?
I was just a little bit confused by the, the, what was at our place here, because there was...
I'll walk through it if you would like.
You've got the annual report, but then there were a number of other...
Their agendas. I'm going to explain that.
Okay, very good.
All right, folks. So, what you have before you is, is the first little packet is the actual annual report. And, you know, we, we've done this for a while now. It basically just describes, you know, kind of why we do these annual reports. Talks about the Public Act 33 of 2008. And then it gives the planning commissions... about the public act 33 of 2008, and then it gives the planning commission's names and the roster and their term dates, talks a little bit about the planning staff, and we get into the activities that we've had over the past year. And as you can see, we've got the planning commission, and they've had nine meetings, three site plans, three special land uses, a PUD, and a rezoning. If you'll recall, the first part of the year, the planning commission was kicking off the master plan, so we spent a good amount of time on that. And also during that time, it was kind of fun, we managed to adopt a new solar energy ordinance, and I'm happy to say that we've got three of them in place now. So, pretty cool, we finally got a.
What type were they? They're?
They're personal, all of them are personal for their homes.
Like, on the roof?
On the roof, okay. So, it's kind of nice to have them, you know, we didn't have an ordinance, we adopted an ordinance, and what, within a, gosh, a few months, we've got three of them.
Just some time, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
So, we have some criteria to say.
Well, you know, you guys have been talking about this for quite a long time as a commission, you know, the whole, you know, you know, green energy stuff, whether it's, you know, windmills or solar and whatever. You know, I just happened to come from a place where we worked on a couple of solar ordinances, and I had a couple of questions since I'd been here from folks, so you look confused, sir.
I figured it out.
Yeah.
I was looking at the difference between site plans by site plan review committee versus planning.
Ah, okay. So, yeah, and if you guys, please, this is not a format that is etched in stone, if there's something I can do about this that'll make it easier, better for you, just let me know. My idea is to give you the information and make sure that, you know, you know and can talk about the things that you've done. The site plan review committee had four meetings, reviewed six site plans, and a final plan for a PUD. Now, at the planning level, we did eight administrative site plan approvals. That helps us just to kind of keep some of the projects moving through, and I'll go through the list of these here in just a moment. The other stuff here really just explains kind of what some of these things are, what a site plan review is, how we do them, special land use, PUD, talk about the zoning board of appeals, as I mentioned earlier. We do have public hearings at the planning commission meetings, and we had a good number of them this year. I also pointed out, put it in for the, for the commission's interest, is, you know, just kind of where we're at with the master planning budget, we've spent about half of that. I expect we'll have about half of that spent by the end of this fiscal year, and so what I've done is I've simply budgeted, I won't spend it all this year, so I've just budgeted for the remainder of that for the following year. So, there's no additional cost per se, but I will need to have that money carried over. In regards to zoning, you know, you guys know, and you know, recently the recreation marijuana facilities have been opened. We will not, do not allow them here in town. We have an opt-out ordinance in effect, and I don't suspect that that'll change. I haven't heard any pressure from organizations, from people, individuals about wanting it. I'll be honest with you, there's a couple of other communities that, as a consultant that, and I worked for, boy, they had folks coming in just strong-arming them to, almost forcing them to let them, you know, have marijuana facilities. It's just a whole different environment out there in some of these smaller communities, because they think there's money to be had, and, boy, the money's so small compared to the cost to provide the service, you know, they don't think about how much it costs to have police officers available to take care of these places or whatever, fire or whatever. And they get $5,000 a year, you know, and that's it, that doesn't pay for anything.
Plus, they have to deal in cash because it's still illegal.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's crazy.
It's just, it's just not in good size.
The feds have not caught up with, with what's the changes at the state level. And it is, it's a, they have nowhere to deposit their money.
I can't imagine, I just, I mean, I just can't imagine.
I attended a, I attended a conference of insurance legislators a few years ago, because I was on the insurance committee and, and we took, we, they were the discussion from people all over the country, and then we had one fellow come in and talk about, he was in the business of the, of the hardware of marijuana growing and such.
Oh.
And they all were talking about how Colorado or their experience in Kansas or one of the other states, and they were all kind of a mutual admiration society. And then somebody from the National Bankers Association stood up and rained on their parade and said, I got a newsflash for you guys, you can't be selective in the kind of laws that you would, you know, pay attention to and the ones you ignore, you have nowhere to deposit the money, because we're not going to risk our charters by, until the federal government gets, gets there, makes a decision to delist these as, this as a controlled substance, which they haven't done.
Yeah, no.
And so, you know, it's, Washington needs to get.
Yeah.
So, I think, I mean, I think that township's decision was wise.
Oh, gosh, I'm glad I'm not planning for it, you know, truly, it just wouldn't be fun. Solar energy, we talked a little bit about that, we were able to adopt that ordinance, we've had success with it, and as I mentioned, with the accessory structure height, the ZBA has asked us to take a look at that, and we will, thank you. Again, just a short list of the things, just kind of broke them down, the site plan review, ZBA, the meetings, I added the master plan steering committee meetings on there. The year ahead, if you remember back in January, we approved the contract with Beckett and Raider. We've had eight meetings to date, we've, this is the steering committee, we reviewed six revised sections and have received over 700 responses to the survey. It'll stay open until December 31st. Zoning amendments, again, I mentioned that, the coordination, those are the things that we anticipate seeing and doing for the coming years. And then we've, again, we've given you a map that identifies the location of all of the developments that we've done over the, over the year. You've got all the administrative cases, the planning commission cases, as well as the ZBA cases. Those are listed, not because they're all under the planning commission's purview, but they're all very related, at least the admin and the PCR. ZBA, again, I just think the relationship between the ZBA and the planning commission is so important that whatever's going on here ought to be known there, and whatever's going on there ought to be known here, I believe that in my experience. And then I've given you a list of the administrative approvals, you don't get to see these, they're done typically in my office. And so, a lot of these, we'll talk a little bit about them. Let's take the Dork Federal Credit Union, you know, they expanded their parking lot, and that was an admin project, we approved it, but that went through the site plan review committee as well. They're called an admin because that's what we charge, it's an administrative fee. And then we've, we had a few others, as you can see there, you know, the remodel of the, was the old Halo Burger on Holly, that not only had to go through the site plan review as an admin, but it also had to come before the planning commission because they needed a special land use for the alcoholic beverages, they added alcoholic beverages and wanted to continue the drive-through. And that's called unbelievable, oh, freaking unbelievable burger, is the name of it down there. That was tough, I had a lot of people asking me whether or not they could put that on their sign, and I said, well, of course they can, I can't stop. And, you know, the other ones, you know, pretty straightforward, just a number of these just didn't come before the planning commission, so I wanted to make sure it got in your report. So, that's really it in a nutshell. Now, the other attachments, you guys, is just copies of all of the different bodies' agendas, so that if you were interested in looking at any of the information on these, you could, I just, you know, I mean, if you'd like it in a different way, I could do it, you just tell me how you, you know, while you like it, I can make it happen. The one thing I'm doing, I asked Maria just today, I said, you know, Maria, let's start this next year by, when you put your docket sheets together, let's just put it in there in the format, that it's going to come out when we print the map and we put it in the annual report, so that when she types it in once, you know, we don't have to go back through and look through minutes, we don't have to go back through and pull up all the plans and do all, it's quite a chore right now, so I'm just thinking of how we can streamline this and put it, maybe just start it in an Excel spreadsheet, list the project, give it to our GIS guys at the end of the year, and they'll print it out, and it should be pretty easy, it should save us some time. And that's why I'm saying, if you guys have a different format or thoughts about something, please let me know, I'm happy to give it a try. I really want to make sure that you can pick it up, you can look at it, you go, okay, I get it, here's see what we've done. And if you read it and you think of a different way, just tell me, I'm happy to do it, this will be forwarded to the board. If you want to take action tonight, if not, that's fine.
One thing I would ask to take a look at, because it isn't clear to me.
Yeah.
Page two, it says, site plan review committee have four meetings, review six site plans, I'm left in the second paragraph, and we go down about the fourth paragraph, and it says nine site plans reviewed by the SPR.
Oh.
And then when I go to the map, I count 10, so just double-check the numbers, I guess, that's all.
Thank you. Do you see that?
I think, seems like it was last year, the year before that we had talked about this.
Yep. And that back sheet, too, that I went ahead and gave you the list of the admin. So, if you're comfortable with it, except for the changes that you've asked.
Double-check those numbers.
I'll double-check them without question, I'll fix that, because there's clearly a mistake there. But if you would like, you can take action, and I'll move this on to the, to the board at their, one of their January meetings.
So, what I hear you saying is, our homework assignment is to review this, and if we have any input to get back with you, and if we're okay with it, no response is necessary, is that correct?
Well.
And get back to you by December what?
Sounds like marker like for us to take action.
This evening, unless you're not comfortable with it, that's fine, I'll do it whenever. If you guys want more time to look at it, if that's what you're getting at, that's fine, but otherwise, my intent, and it's because I look at this, guys, and I'm, I look at this as a pretty simple, straightforward thing, I prepared it. So, I kind of know what's in there, and it's a format that we've kind of agreed to in the past, and we're moving forward on. If there's anything about it you would like adjusted, I will, I appreciate the comment about double-checking those, I will absolutely do that. Otherwise, if you're comfortable with it. We could move it to the board.
We could make a motion to approve the draft with potential modifications.
Okay.
Administrative modifications that the.
That's good.
Planner would make.
Thank you.
And if so, I would be glad to make that motion, that we approve the draft of the Grand Blanc Township Planning Commission Annual Report to be submitted to the Board of Trustees with the potential of any administrative revisions that the planner will make in our regards.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Anderson, is there support for that?
I'll support.
Support by Mr. Brown, we have further discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes seven zero.
Okay. All right, so. So, this next question is a, it's on a small calendar on the side, but our normal meeting would be on Thursday, the second. The problem with moving it, oh, wait, the board meets on the second and fourth, so we could use that, it would be the first, be the second Thursday, but the first Tuesday, I don't know how the board's meetings will work, since that's how that works out. Normally, the board's meetings are, you know, that, that second Tuesday and the second Thursday, maybe it's just the following Thursday, because it would have to go up to the week before to be the second, because, because of the way that the month falls. So, I would say we could schedule ours for the ninth, at least preliminarily, if you guys are good with that, I will do it preliminarily, and go ahead, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm traveling on the ninth, I have a question, could I participate by conference call if, if the circumstances dictated I needed to?
I think you could listen, but you wouldn't be able to vote.
Oh, okay.
I don't think I would be, I don't think we'd be able to let you vote, but you, I don't think there's any problem with anybody listening.
Okay.
I'd have to, I'll check with the attorney.
I, I, I just, I did not know what, what the, I should know, because I remember this coming up a few years ago.
I don't think you can vote on the phone, no.
But I didn't, I wasn't sure what the protocol was.
Yeah, I'm almost positive you cannot.
Okay.
Do we have anything for the agenda?
I don't have anything right now. Now, I could wait and find out if we've got items to come in, and then let you know and see if you guys would want to schedule it for the night. And I would have at least two weeks, maybe three weeks notice, because I got to have a deadline in case an item needs to go to the paper or whatever, you know.
Personally, I would prefer the 16th, but if that's, if that's not too late in the month, but it, but.
It's a board meeting night. That's a board meeting night.
All right, all right.
I'm assuming the ninth is not, because it's usually the second Tuesday and then the following Thursday. This month falls a little different, so our date might be the ninth, is what I'm getting at.
Well, we have a regularly scheduled meeting, we don't have anything in there, I'll be the coffee morning. Might do with this, there's no reason to have it.
Yeah.
So, go ahead and cancel, she'll send out notice. So, I guess I would propose that we at least move it to the ninth.
Okay, cool, I got you, all right. That works good, everybody agree to that, then? But consensus is good, I see a consensus, thank you. No, it says vote on it, darn it, so I'm going to have, have to ask you to vote. I'm sorry, it says it.
We're going to have to take the.
Of recess.
Is our motion in order? I'll move that, I'll move that we have the meeting on January 9th at the appointed time.
Okay, cancel the second.
Motion by.
Robertson. I know I'm new to the board, but I thought my name might be a little familiar to folks, I don't know.
I forget my name sometimes, yeah, so. Motion by Mr. Robertson to move the planning commission meeting to the board by Mr. Brown. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman, recently we met with two different residents in the community where they had decks built, and they had to come in for some variances on both decks, and I think in both instances also, they got fleeced by a couple of deck builders that took the money and ran, left the homeowners holding the bag, partially finished decks. And, boy, that just rubbed me the wrong way, and I just, I did talk with Attorney Laddie, and there's not really anything we can do, other than buyer beware. And in this case, I'm not sure how these were caught, whether, meaning the decks themselves, but they missed by quite some number of feet of being in compliance for setback provisions. The zoning board of appeals, looking at each case individually, agreed to variance in both instances. I do have something, it's not with the zoning board of appeals, but you might want to know that I think Hilton Hotels is going to be building a ski slope on Holly Road where they're going to be bowling. Anyone know what I'm talking about here? Okay, I'm telling you what, they're digging deep out there, and there you could have a slope, a ski slope in there. So, they've started working on that development there for Hilton.
Oh, oh, yes, I know what you're talking about, sure, yep, I saw that today myself.
And I thought, when I looked at the thing, I said, God, they could have a ski slope.
They're piling that dirt up?
They're moving a lot of.
They don't have anywhere to put it?
Yeah, I was just saying, they got a little bit of.
That used to be the site they, you know.
Hotel is going to be going in between, well, in front of.
Fairfield.
Fairfield.
Fairfield Inn at the back.
Oh, I see.
And they're going to be in between that and Taco Bell.
Taco Bell.
And we approved that a few months ago, for a campus kind of environment with sidewalks. That's about it, decks and ski slopes, that's all I have.
Questions for Mr. Brown? Site plan review, we have not seen any site plans.
Nope. Nope.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before I make the motion to adjourn, unless there's any other comments, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Well, thank you, right back at you.
Yeah, it's a very appropriate...
With that, I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
All right.
We have a motion by Mr. Van Der Skie to adjourn at 8:12 PM, supported by Mr. Horsham. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, folks, you've got to show up at the tree lighting ceremony. That's coming up soon, you know, at Bicentennial Park, what, is it Friday night? Saturday, thank you.
Starting at five, right?